Well. So it's six o'clock, so I wanted to start the meeting for the Dyson Development and Industrial Commission. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the town YouTube channel. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed. May also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. To join a Zoom meeting, meeting ID is eight, five, two, four, one, four, three, six, one, eight, one. Passcode seven, three, two, three, six, eight. And the phone number to call in is nine, two, nine, two, oh, five, six, oh, nine, nine. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if anybody here need agenda. If you need what John. And that's what you said. So I did send it out in the email. And really, the first four items on here overlap quite a bit. Discuss the post survey. We'll set up a date for the first public forum for post survey. Also talk about the feedback from the Chamber of Commerce event. Feedback that John and I got when we were writing around town promoting that. And survey updates that kind of inform one another. But the first item just for logistics is, and I had some difficulty reserving this room because October is just pretty well booked. So we went out into November. So I did tentatively reserve this room for Monday. I think it's Monday, November seventh at six o'clock. And that would be for the first public town. After the survey's gone out where and we were circuit was planning on two of these. Where, you know, we could have people come in, we could talk about what the survey has shown us today. People get a chance to talk, all that kind of stuff. And I did review that with Mike as well. It's a little close to the special town meeting. But we didn't want to keep pushing it further and further out, so. Does that date work for everybody though?
It's the fourth, November fourth.
Seventh, November seventh, yeah. Alright, so I'll accept the motion that we set November seventh, six P M at Old Town Hall. For the first public forum.
Oh, second. Do you mind if I, if I ask a question quickly on that? I was wondering, given how beautiful the space was for Bristol Aggie, would it be possible to get a space there for the event? Or is there a preference to have it at like town hall space?
Like that, I don't know. I mean, Bristol, Bristol, they were generous enough to allow us to use that at us. It's not like it's a town venue. But I bet I could follow up with them and ask if they'd be amenable to that. I don't know from a town perspective, if it'd be a preference to doing it here versus hosting at Aggie. Personally, it's just my own preference. I'd rather do it here. Just, I think it's, people know where it is, it's kind of accommodated for a number of people. It's just town property. The town event. That's my personal opinion, but I mean, for other people.
That makes us, I, I, I agree, I agree. That's me.
Alright, do you have a preference, you guys?
You know what they say about the bird in the hand? I know you have this place, I'm not sure you're going to have the Aggie.
I agree.
You don't know how quickly they're going to get back to you. You want to be able to get the word out, so people actually do come.
Right, well, is it because you don't, you're not able to do it on a seven?
Me? No, 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 it has nothing to do with that. I was just thinking about space, you know, Bristol Aggie is a very striking place. I, that was my first time visiting when I went to the Dyson Business Event last week. So just trying to see if that might attract more individuals to the event. But if, if that's your preference to have it at Old Town Hall, I'm totally open to that. I just figured I'd bring it.
Okay, that's a question of liability, Bristol Aggie. Yeah, I mean, they have to agree to all that, yeah, so. I mean, they did it for us for last week, didn't have to do it again, but, but I agree with it might take a while to negotiate with them and then getting into October and still not sure and.
I mean, the other option, if it doesn't work, isn't there another date? That even if we had to change the.
I think everybody's okay with a date. It works for Lizette, it works for Mike, I've already reserved this room because I did it preemptively, just put it on the calendar, so.
That's funny.
Alright, so I, I wasn't making that motion if someone wants to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
And a second.
I'll second it, sorry.
No, no problem. So motion made in seconds, so all those in favor, say aye, 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 opposed. The ayes have it. That would be November seventh, six P M. And Mike, I can write something up and hand it to Leanne. I haven't set up the D D I C Facebook page yet, I just haven't gotten around to it. I have to call the, the I T consultant that the town has to ask them like the password and stuff. So I'll do that, I'll put it on our page and then we can just share it. A bit easier for her and then we can also share it off to all the other.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, alright. The other, and again, if people want to bring up feedback that they got from the event at Aggie, from things they saw on the survey, from, you know, John, things that you and I heard around town while we're talking about this, that's fine, it's just like one big discussion, but. We just wanted to talk about planning the details for the November seventh event. And I'm not sure you were here last time, Lenny, but I had said to, to Lizette and Mike and we were all here, was that I personally think it's going to go better on November seventh if although Serpide has been instrumental in setting this up, running the survey, helping us, Lizette's going to be here. I'd rather have one of us actually lead that November seventh meeting. I just think it's local. It's somebody they know, somebody they trust. I'd like you to do that.
I'd be delighted.
Okay, good.
You know, one of the things that I always wanted to see is an industrial commercial development program. I saw what it did in Taunton. And the feedback that I have received at the MMA and various other selectmen, selectwomen that I have met for this area. It's been overwhelmingly positive and they want to copy our idea, I think it's a great idea. And many of the small towns agree with the idea. We can't, the town cannot afford ninety to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to pay for an urban planner to be working. So we have a great group of volunteers, we got Lizette, we got John, who are doing it. It'd have been a huge help for the town, so I'm excited about it. And the whole idea of what this group is doing.
Let me just ask you, Alyssa, what were you, what are your ideas in terms of how the meeting would go, how the forum would, would run and the kind of questions like you'd be asking, or is it just kind of presenting them with information that we've received from the survey and soliciting feedback or?
So one of the ways that we like to approach our public meetings. There, I wouldn't say necessarily informal, they just tend to be a little bit more free flowing in the sense that we like to have stations, so maybe one station will talk about, you know, existing conditions in town, those demographic data, those, you know, numbers that really set the stage for an understanding of where we're at. We may have another station talking about the survey to get a preliminary, you know, those results out there. And then we could have, I was kind of envisioning because, you know, this economic development plan takes into account a lot of different kind of characteristics, we're talking about, you know, industrial, like you're talking about, Lenny. You're also talking about agricultural based kind of business cultivation and small businesses. And then we have those home base, so you're kind of running the spectrum on a couple different types of economic development that we're trying to generate. So I would like to have a couple different stations to kind of touch on those and focus on kind of like those key areas that we identified in that kind of data brief that I shared with you guys, saying, you know, these are areas that not only is the survey already beginning to identify them as kind of prime locations for, say, small business development or, you know, policies that would help home based development, I, I saw a lot of that going around. And so the way I would structure is that maybe we have, if you want a presentation, I would do maybe like a quick ten, ten minute introduction in the beginning, open it up, let people kind of mill around, look at the stations, ask questions to me, to other staff that we may have attending that night, as well as the, the committee itself. As we get closer to that date, I will definitely share maybe some of those boards, what they might look like and get a kind of layout for, for the space itself, so that way we, we can kind of picture it ahead, ahead of the day. And I'll be there early to set up as well, so, so we'll be, we'll be well prepared.
Okay, so I mean, I have some initial thoughts about the idea of like a station for multiple stations where people are having different discussions going on at the same time versus not a town meeting, but everybody here, somebody leading it, directing a conversation, but it being one conversation at a time. But I don't know what other people think of.
More of the presentation kind of thing?
Well, not a presentation because it'd be, I mean, like she said, maybe ten minutes of presentation. But it's really just, here's what we're hearing, here's what we're finding. Let's, I don't think we need to hear from you. And then soliciting people to talk and ask questions and, but have it been done as a big group? As opposed to multiple little groups that are all having conversations about different things? And maybe not all coming back to cycle back together and I don't know what other people's opinions are about how, which would work better and.
Because sometimes things, if you break it up into subgroups, there may be a topic of interest that goes a direction that the person over here doesn't get to hear that may have something to contribute to that discussion over there. Was when you have the whole group at one time, someone may have a thought on a specific topic that's being discussed at that moment. They'll, they'll pop, you know, they'll, but they may not hear someone's idea. If you do the subgroups. And just build on it or say it's not a good idea for various reasons.
Not only that, but also people will have the tendency to stop talking before the other one is finished and like I do sometimes. So I think if it's a whole group, then there's a listening point. Nobody is going to interrupt in between that, I don't know.
Everybody gets a common understanding, right?
Yeah. Do you have any, Mike, you were going to talk, Mike, or?
So you're like, I've been, I'm actually through like a few of these and what I, I like. So you're like in the ones that I, you know, like in, like, like in the forums or the charrettes really like, as they're also a car that I've been part of. Oh, you know, the stations really, at least at the beginning, they seem to be the most effective. Like it's an opportu, like it's an opportunity like, oh yeah, like in the boards at these stations are actually really helpful. Like in the fact of it really getting at the prompts, oh, you know, that we really and the questions and the priorities that we want to hear from our residents about and that we want to hear from them about their opinions. Like and they're really effective and actually, oh, you're like in soliciting honest feedback where people might not be influenced. Like, well, like afraid to really vote with their feet, so to speak. Oh, you know, they, oh, you know, they have the ability, the ones that I participated in. Oh, you know, like really, like all that's really required is that they put like a posted note on the board with their thoughts of feedback. Like any information that is really gleaned. Oh, oh yeah, like from those posted notes on the board is really like it really helpful, like I do think if we have it that way, like begin that way. So yeah, like then it could really, oh, you know, turn into like more of, oh, you know, like a conversation, like a pub. Like a speaking forum where like Lenny would speak. Oh, you know, like and then, yeah, like and then, and then after that, I think you oh yeah, like I think Serpide or like Lizette would be able to really take what has been actually outlined as a priorities on the boards. Oh yeah, I can see if those in attendance really, they want to expound on them, they want to really have a more in depth your conversation about any of the general themes that were prioritized, but I do think at the outset. Oh, you know, like when people, I mean, when people show up having the boards as prompts, because some people, they might only be able to come in for the first ten to fifteen minutes, you know, they, so yeah, like they might cycle through the station, but we still want to totally actually gauge their, so yeah, gauge their feedback even if they're in and out. So I've always found the boards are like very helpful. So, so yeah, like I just wanted to lend my experiences to that as well. Oh yeah, like hopefully that helps to make sense.
No, it does. And I hadn't really thought of it that way and you've also, you said, you and Lizette have done this several times. So it'd be like Lizette or a combination of Lizette and Lenny, giving it some opening when we kick it off. Then you'd have like a table with Lizette by yourself, maybe who's going over the survey results. And another table of, you know, John and I maybe who were around town talking to business. I'm not sure what are the different tables would be except, so.
So imagine we, what we'll print is like, we'll print these large twenty by thirty poster boards essentially. And on those poster boards will have big takeaway messages. So for example, when it comes to demographic data, you know, what's really important was, but we'll probably put like, you know, the residential tax rate versus commercial tax rate and some of those really big takeaway messages that we want to highlight when it comes to economic development. For example, with the survey, we might take some of the questions that might guide our recommendations or that might guide our understanding and really highlight the results, show it in a chart. And that's one way for people to really get a conversation going because essentially what these are is they're, they're conversations that you're having, it's people who want to ask questions and, you know, we can have a very detailed printout of all the survey results on a, on a sheet. But anyone who wants to look at that can. But we're also thinking about people who, you know, are coming in after a long day of work and maybe want to pop in for a half hour. We're thinking about people who don't feel comfortable standing up in front of a group of thirty people and, and, you know, saying, I want to start up a business but don't know how and would love some help. So we want to be able to capture as many people as possible. And I really think these types of forums where we have stations that people can kind of go towards what interests them and what they're really passionate about is a great way to get feedback and, you know, it's funny how these things tend to really work out of the, the common themes, the the really important messages that people want you to hear, they do come out in these types of events. Like, like Mike was saying, we often will have kind of like, we'll do these for master plans or like visioning exercises and you'll see that so many people have the same train of thought or they're going in the same direction. And it's okay if you have someone who thinks differently, but it's just giving them that opportunity to, to say it and for us to, to give them that chance and listen to it.
Are we going, if we're going to go into the stations, are we going to identify specific themes for each station?
Yes, yes, so what I can do is kind of set out a couple different categories, which is essentially a station. And I can share that with the group as, as we kind of develop into, into the, the workshop itself. So I would imagine we'd have a welcome table, we'd have a existing conditions, kind of demographic data section, a survey station, and then I really think we should talk about those key areas in town and how they fall into commercial development, home based businesses, small business development, and then agricultural activities. And, you know, I, I'm actually thinking this on the fly right now, but it would be really nice if, to give it some kind of interactive element. We could have like stickers, maybe identifying each type of, of kind of economic activity and putting a sticker where people think that activity should take place. And, you know, it's a fun way, it's a really simple way to get those ideas on paper and get people talking, right, and, and thinking about these things, which is what we want them to be doing.
Uh, uh, people have comments or?
Sounds good.
You think it sounds good?
Yeah, I like the sticker idea, Lizette. I think really that, you know, I've done that in the corporate world and that has worked. When you have a large group together and you're trying to understand priorities and that sort of thing, so. I, I think that's where that, that's interesting.
Yeah. Logistically, will we need to get bulletin boards or can we use the walls?
We provide all of that, Serpide has the form boards, we have the easels, so I'll, I'll bring all of that with me that day.
Alright, so again, and this has happened before, our next meeting here, like to hear out like a fleshed out version of this, not going to be till the end of October, and then we're talking November seventh. So are people okay with maybe myself working with Lizette over the coming month? To get an understanding of like in detail what this is, so that come our next meeting in October, we can present it and get everybody's buy in and that work, okay, alright. Anything else about the logistics or of how this would be run, Lizette, or Mike's suggestions you had that you wanted to cover?
No, I don't have any.
Agreed, yeah, same here, I think as we get, you know, as we start fleshing out the ideas a little bit more, those, those will come and, and we can discuss them, you and I, Dan, and then we'll bring them to the, to the group.
If I may, how is our survey doing so far, Lizette?
So I, the survey's doing really well. When we went to the business event, we were at eighty-five, since then, we've gone up to about, I believe, ninety-three, ninety-five. So slowly and steadily, we're getting our numbers. It is still heavily residential, or residents who are responding. But I made some connections at the Dyson Business Event, a couple of the bank, Bay Coast and someone else at the, at that group, I forget the, I forget the organization. But they said that I could reach out and maybe get either physical copies of the surveys in there or find a way to have them share it on their end.
Beautiful, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, I did.
It was a great event.
I checked this afternoon, I think we were up to six respondents of businesses. So we went from three to six and the additional three were all agricultural, they were farms or one was a flower farm, but they were all agricultural. And then she said we were up to like ninety-three. I did want to caveat that, and I'm not sure where this stood at our last meeting, so I didn't look for it, but of those ninety-three, thirty-two of them dropped out after question three. Like they said, do I live, I live in Dyson, I've lived here so many years, no, I don't own business, and then they stopped. They never answered any questions about what they want to see in Dyson, what businesses, they're like, they just said, yeah, I live here. I guess the questions then were like, okay, now put on your thinking cap. And that's where they stopped, so we're not really at ninety-three, we're more like sixty-one.
For those, Dan, do we have those people's contact information?
I think only if they went through the last question and left their email, which is an option. And I, I think a fair number of people have left emails, is that correct? At this point, was that?
A few people, a few people have left their, their name and email, yes, a few people have.
So if they didn't complete it, could we send them?
Well, if they, if they left their email, yeah. So I was thinking that, we were talking before about advertising this. You know, we'll put it on the, the Facebook page here, put it on the town Facebook page, town hall can do that, can share it. Mike actually checked with the town clerk because Lizette had asked if she printed up something, could it be handed out at special town meeting? I didn't know whether that was appropriate or not, but for the town clerk, there's no problem with that. So Lizette, our special, what is our special town meeting, what date? It's November first.
First, yeah, November first, it's Tuesday evening.
Yeah, so we would just need however many, and generally we get roughly a hundred people at town meeting, some, some years we get a lot more, some years we get fewer than that, but on an average, it's about a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five people.
Yeah, okay, great, so I can, I can definitely print some out if you'd like. Would you want me to do maybe like one fifty, two hundred, and then we can, I can bring those to town hall the next time I'm there? And then whatever is, is remaining, you can bring to town meeting, so that way they're out there a little bit longer.
Sure, and then we have them, we can hand out the people to, if we happen to see them about. The other thing I was thinking was, I had asked Carrie Easterday from Cleaning Office, if we had contact information for all the HOAs in town, I think there's something like twenty, twenty-two HOAs at this point. And they go back many years, some of them, but yeah, so unfortunately she said it's yes and no, she has them. They're not, some of the older ones are not really up to date because we were relying on them to notify us when officers change or things like that. But she said she could provide that, so I was thinking that I might reach out to those HOAs and say, you know, we're having this. Invite, encourage your people to come, or at the very least, what is InterHisto as a representative, if, if you don't have, everybody want to come, you know, but it's, it broadens the base of who we're inviting. We also have the emails that people have left on the survey and we can target them.
There is a member on Serpide who lives in the council oak LA was important, would be greatly appreciated.
He, he works for Serpide?
Ah, yes, Grant King.
Yep, she, she works for Grant King, actually, so.
Oh, correct.
Yes, yes, so she works for Grant, but yeah. And yeah, so I was thinking that would just be one more avenue of like getting people out there and plus we have all the people who signed up for the Bristol Aggie event, we have their emails. We can email them as well and.
Yeah, good.
Yeah. Hopefully we get a good response. Um, but let me see where I'm here. So the next thing I have is just to discuss the feedback from last week's event at the Bristol Aggie. My understanding was, at the end of the day, we had something like nineteen Dyson businesses registered and three Berkeley ones. And I think as I was going out, I looked at the cards still on the table and I think maybe we had like, out of the nineteen, we had maybe thirteen businesses show up, plus all the sponsors and so forth, and other people from the town and, and that. But I don't know for those who were there, if they had feedback they heard from people or comments they've heard since or particularly comments about like where the town should be headed kind of stuff, as well as like, yeah, I like the event, but.
Things that I heard, I enjoyed the fact that we brought people together to have conversations about how they could improve their individual businesses and ideas of how the town, both towns, Berkeley and Dyson could improve the business climate. As far as help to businesses in particular. There would, a Berkeley business, which is the Berkeley liquor store that is opening. They gained some information in regards to grants and getting started because he's just opening his business. A business in Taunton. Heard about it and sent someone from Dyson to get information about seed. Because they didn't, it was the Mediterranean Grill up on one thirty-eight Street.
So good. I'm sorry, Lenny, I just said that is so good, that place, the Mediterranean Greek place is so good, I'm sorry.
So he, he didn't take advantage of the low interest loans that the federal government, the one percent loans that the federal government gave during COVID. Because like all the businesses, he had trouble getting customers to come in. Employees, supply chain breakdowns, and right now, he had used his savings to get through COVID. Now he finds himself in a position where he needs to reach out. Now he finds himself in a position where he needs to reach out. Either to a bank or a a federal institution to help him and seeds. They have grants available, which should be a wonderful help to him.
Great.
Did either of you or Mike, I know you were there, have any other?
So I know, um so I saw Darlene, I was in Arujos on Friday. And um she thought it was a great, you know, event. She she really was, you know, yeah, yeah, she was very happy about it. So good feedback there. Um one of the things that Chris said she was gonna follow up with all sponsors. Uh with a survey about, you know, what they thought about the event and that sort of thing. And I expect that Chris will be sharing with the the board. Of the chamber, all of the statistics about that event, okay? So I don't have it now, but as soon as I have it, you know what I mean, at our next meeting, I'm sure I'll be able to share all that information with you. Okay, yeah, yeah. I think the feedback, you know, all I got was all very positive.
So I hope I'm not speaking on a term, but you mentioned this to me in an email, that assuming the sponsors thought it was beneficial to them and. You know, everybody's like, that she floated the idea of maybe making it, at least doing it again next year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It'd be great.
I followed up with Chris on that and um she said she would la- like to. Propose that to the board or directors and make sure that the board is all on. On, you know, up for that, because you know, the board has to support that, right? So. Um so she said, I said, well, our next meeting's on Monday. She said, well, we're not having a board meeting between now and Monday, so. So I think we, you know, our next meeting, I will probably have, you know, be able to hopefully give commitment. For a second annual uh event and um then have some statistics on the first one.
The only um negative, and that's not a big negative, but that. Uh one of the people there, cause they had said you can bring flyers or business cards or something to lay out on the table for people to pick up. But they did that at the desk where you walk in, not upstairs.
Okay.
And so I could tell from his face, he was a little disappointed when I said, oh yeah, you drop those off downstairs and people can see them as they come in and out. But he was hoping to be able to like, just put it up there in the same room and have, cause he was wanting to, he brought a bunch of business cards and such, so.
Another piece of feedback that I got, it was more specific. And it was a request, not so much for those businesses like seed and the bank. But for the Dyton Industrial Development Committee, had to do with Avala Textiles. Uh he is making progress, great progress, his. Attempt to remain indicted.
Yes.
Are you hoping him?
And he is looking for us to help him through the permitting process.
Okay.
Um. Shy, I told him that I would do that.
Okay.
He's um. I'm porting you, I'm gonna call. But he's, that he's really going back and forth with.
Permitting boards, like conservation, of course, Jimmy Aggy. Uh building partner, somewhat streamline the process. But communication. Needs to. Get out there more. People are uh uh are not sure where to turn to first. And. I think we as a town need to do more using social media to get it out. This is the permitting process, you know, these are the people you you get in touch with. You know, most of the time it starts with Mr. Aggy. A lot of people don't know that. And they don't know who to get in touch with to start the process, yes.
Lenny, um when I was, you know, first on this committee, I was perusing the Dyton. Town website, and you guys actually have this wonderful business. Hmm what's it called? The business?
The Business Guide.
Yeah, the Business Guide, and that is very, I thought, to be very helpful, actually. Are you familiar with that Business Guide?
It's just, I I've read it, I agree with you.
But not.
But then everybody knows it's there, they have to go look for it, yeah.
So post a link to that document on Facebook or something like that.
Absolutely.
I think the town has come a long way with the process of permitting. Uh I think they're doing a very, very good job right now and. Be it with the planning board, with the zoning board, with everyone involved, I think everybody's really trying hard. I think what happens a lot of times is people submit the paperwork. They are told to or asked to have certain things included with that. And it's not there. So then they tend to get upset because. We didn't let them do that, or who, whatever board didn't allow them to go on to the next step. Because they didn't have that. So it it's, it works both ways.
Are there checklists that says, let's see, you know, step one, you need these three things, okay? Get that. Step two, you need these two things.
I think the planning board has that.
Okay.
For for the planning board.
And I believe Jim also has it, but it's more of a case of people getting started, not knowing where to begin.
Okay.
And. Not everyone goes to the town page. Or they'll walk in and, you know, do I go to planning board first, or do I go see Jimmy Aggy on building first?
Yep.
And and every permit could be different.
Every situation is different, right?
And it's, it's, it could be. It it it's very easy, and I think we make it as easy as we possibly can, and I think we are. Doing every single thing that, that every board that I know of is doing everything that they can. To try to accommodate the permitting process, especially on businesses.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that Lenny mentioned, we brought together what we're co- what we're calling a pack team last fall, actually. Uh with me, um uh with me, the building commissioner, um like Carrie Easterday. Um health agent, Pilling, and um and, you know, conservation agent. And one of the things we've tried to do, uh like the things, the projects, or the applications, uh like that. Oh, you don't have. Oh, you don't, oh, you don't have for whatever reason, you got held up. Uh we've tried to help triage, to finish juice, I can hope so really moving things along. Oh, you're like, oh, you know, in a few instances, it's been helpful. Uh and then, uh in a few instances, as Joe just mentioned, oh, you know, I mean, despite everything that the town is doing. Uh you know, we're trying to move things along and help to really set expectations. Uh but there are like some applicants that, oh, you know, like even still have a challenge, so I mean, it's. So, yeah, yeah, we're gonna continue. Um I think the expectations setting all around. Uh you know, like from the business guide on the website, uh yeah, the comments that I heard the other night were. Uh were really focused on the ex- on the expectation setting as part of the process. Uh but I mean, as was just mentioned too, like every application is a completely different. Uh you know, some have to go to zoning while others don't, oh, you're like, others. Oh, like others are permitted by right with a special permit. Uh you know, when there are some projects that have, oh, you did dealing with wetlands and conservation. Uh but there were some projects that are triggering uh the thirty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand feet for disturbance and stormwater. So, yeah, like, I mean, is. Like as hard as we try and as much as well, I continue trying, like every project is unique and we just have to work these things out altogether as well.
What a lot of people are finding with the permitting process in small towns. Is the different meetings for different things, like planning is that this week. The zoning might be two weeks from now. So if they have to go to those two, uh then they've just lost two weeks. Then all of a sudden, they have to go to. Whatever, you know, the conservation, that's another one. So those are the things that that take the time. I think right now, because zoning and planning is in the same office. And Carrie is the sa- the person of contact. She is very good at what she's doing, and I think all of that helps. Conservation, conservation is on the same office, so the feedback can be very, very, very fast. Jim is in contact with Carrie at all times, you know, when needed. Uh so I I I really think that we're doing a very good job in the town. To try to accommodate everyone. It's, I think the biggest problem is the different. Weeks that the companies come in and they wanna have this permit right away. But y- you have to follow the, every board, you gotta go to them, you know, and. There's not, no, no one can do anything.
I didn't put this on the agenda for tonight, cause I thought it was a future discussion, so I don't really have details, but. There are a few towns that have started what they call. Identifying themselves as red carpet towns, i.e. we roll out the red carpet for businesses, we do. You know, we do uh somersaults to get permitting done. We do whatever it takes to to accommodate you, you know. And that, and then you have to talk about like, well, practically does that mean? It's one thing to say it, it's another to actually do that.
To do it.
And does it cost? I mean, you've got limitations for, you know, town staff, I mean. They can't necessarily be doing, you know, all this on top of it, but it's just something down the road that we might wanna. Look at what other towns are doing, that it'd be lovely to advertise ourselves that way. You know, and it would have to figure out what we're actually advertising when we say it, but just that phrase alone. Because John and I heard this, at least from several people, which is Dyton is unfriendly to business. Could you be more specific? It's just unfriendly. And it was almost like a mantra. It was like, they just say it because they've heard it, just everybody repeats it, and it's just, it's just. The public, it's just the public mindset, so.
Honestly, at one point. Many years ago, it was not easy to pull a permit. I, I mean, I'll, I'm one that will say that, but it's changed a lot.
Could this board help to be like the welcome wagon for businesses?
Should be. Very, yes.
Would they wanna take on that role?
It's possible, I mean.
Do it, to help people to, just like Mr. Avala asked, if we could help him.
We we can, but he has to follow what we say.
You know him better than I.
I do, and I'm getting to know him better and better, so. Let's leave it at that.
But we just never wanna put ourselves in a position where you're. Challenging, hindering town employees from doing the job that we've charged them to do, you know, like. The zoning and the building commissioner and the public health, we just. Try to get between them and and, and it's, it's an assistance only, sort of, but yeah.
Referring them.
Yeah.
Referring them all to Carrie, cause Carrie knows exactly how to go through all this.
I I I don't wanna say that, you know, because I was part of hiring her, honestly. As soon as she leaves, I'm leaving. She makes us look good, that's all that I can say.
The next agenda item was really, just John and I did drive around town handing out the little postcards, advertising the event. We talked to quite a few people. And um some were just very polite, thank you, and they didn't show up, unfortunately, and others gave us more of an earful. Um so I didn't know if you wanted to start it, like what you, kind of like themes that you heard and. You know, I don't know if you wanna identify specific businesses, but you know.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, um so I heard from a couple of businesses about um water bills. So a couple of them were complaining a little bit about some high water bills, um so that was one thing. Um I, um another uh business in the Route forty-four area. You know, did not seem to be too high on Dyton and. Our ability to support a commercial business, um so, you know, you know, I mean, I I certainly heard, got some earfuls there. Um another one was interested in. Uh speaking with Conservation Commission because they had some questionable or maybe some land that. They weren't sure whether it was conservation land or not, and whether they could expand on that land, and. So I connected them with the Conservation Commission person. Um one connection, uh when I visited there. Um they were saying that um they're having a um craft fair coming up. Um that they were asking, could the town support that? And I said, well, I don't know, I don't know, but what I would do is I would come to this meeting. And let you all know that One Connection is planning on having a craft fair um on their property. Um you know, in the next month or so, it's not all finalized yet, but. Um so I told told one connection that I would let the committee committee know. Um let's see. Um we had, um let's see, the um. We had one, one person that you and I spoke with, right, Dan, that um was really anxious to speak with the selectmen, right? And um I don't know, I don't know if you followed up on on that one or not, but um, okay, good, good, good. Yeah. Yeah, um it would be really great if, if, yep, okay. And um then um the other business on one thirty-eighth that had a right-of-way issue. Which I think we resolved, right? We, you or you, we've been able to resolve, right?
Yeah, apparently he's. Getting close to retiring, wanting to sell his business. He almost had a buyer. And um he lost the sale because there's a right-of-way right to his property. Town has access to, to get down to the river, cause the town owns the property behind him. And so we were able to research it, like after like talking, walking away from him. We we did just some legwork and, but right-of-way dates back to the nineteen thirties, and I talked to um. Like Carrie and some other people, oh no, I talked to the assessor's office at Town Hall. And they're like, oh, that should have disappeared years ago. The fact that it's still in the deed is some lazy lawyer not removing it. So I keep all that information, I said, here's what you gotta do, you just gotta write a letter to the selectmen saying the town would like to. Uh you know, withdraw its right to have this right-of-way. And then that's it, you have the letter, or you can have the deed amended if that's what you wanna do and help him solve, and so. Um the assessor's office actually has a file writing and waiting for him, if he were ever write that letter to the town, and they're all set to go and. And clear it up for him, but it's like a little stuff like that, he just didn't know where to go. And of course, he's running a business, so he doesn't have time to run down to Town Hall, so it just kinda sat there and sat there.
And this is huge for his retirement, right? So I mean, this is great, right? I mean, this is where I think we can really help. Small businesses and we need some of that good press, right, for, you know, small businesses say. Hey, these guys are actually helping us, you know what I mean? So I think that's great. I heard a number of things about Zoor uh in in infrastructure. Yep, yeah, I mean, that's a, you know, very constant theme.
One point five mil a mile.
Yeah, yep, 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 so um. Those were, those were mostly my notes, so the Avala textile thing, um. You know, they're anxious, if they can, to vacate their current, you know, location, but they wanna stay in Dyton, so. That's great.
It's gonna take a while for him to do that.
Yep, yep.
Cause I told him what the first step was going to be, what he should do. And he did one, but he didn't do the other. Kind of flip-flopped on things a little bit, and he's all of a sudden excited on. I told him to get in, the first thing to do is make sure that he secures the bid of the property. And then I told him, then you hire an engineer. Get some feedback from the engineering firm, because you're looking at a lot of money. An engineer here to do what you wanna do.
Yeah, yeah.
He hasn't done that at all, so he goes out, he's getting bids on the building.
Yeah, you need to get engineering first, yeah.
I know because I've been there. I, I've done that twenty times and, uh. One step after another and so, but I, I did, I, I, I have talked to him and.
The other one I, I'm sorry, I skipped was, uh, Travikos. Travikos is on one, uh, Route forty, between Sagy and. And Sikhs, right? There's a big business there. Very large business. It's a big spot and they own that. And they're moving to West Bridgewater, um, next year. So that commercial property is gonna be up for sale.
Right.
So I suggested to the guy to come to this event because I thought he could network with other people. That might wanna be looking for property, uh, but he didn't attend.
He's been at our meeting.
Travikos? The planning board?
No. This night meeting, he came down with Mike.
That wasn't.
That wasn't.
That was Zeke.
And.
And, oh, was his partner there? That's Travikos.
Is not, he's not a partner. I think he was Travikos.
Okay, cause Travikos is a huge corporation.
It is. It is. It is a big corporation. And I spoke with the general manager. And so, so, right, he's, he's not like the president of this company. He's the general manager of that facility.
They have sites all over.
Okay, that particular property has. A lot of. Wetlands.
Really?
That only a portion of it. Is going to be.
Does it go down in the back? Because when you approach it, it goes up.
Yes, but it doesn't matter. You know, if there's verno pools. And I, I actually got firsthand information on that. No engineering has been done or anything like that. But the wetlands maps show a lot of issues there.
So I just know the time. It's got five of seven. I mean, you said you had to leave at seven. I didn't know if you wanted to share anything before you.
Yes, I do. And, and it's, it's gonna open up a can of worms, unfortunately, but. I've heard it twice from potential developers or representatives of developers. One of them I heard today in a meeting I had with a developer. And they've expressed frustration. When the town created zones. What are they thinking when they created landlocked industrial zones as. Exemplified by one on William Street and one on Lincoln Avenue.
I'm not aware of any landlocked. Industrial zones.
The one on Lincoln Avenue is not landlocked.
But it's a.
But it's completely unusable for industrial purposes. It's, it's, it's like fifty feet running along the, the three-mile river. It's like. Oh, it's useless for industrial, but it is, it's not landlocked.
Well, but if you follow that.
There's a farm.
Map there. All those houses are in, in industrial.
Now, this is on the right-hand side of, it's just on the riverside is industrials. Yeah, there are a couple houses there, but it'd be tough to like.
And it's an easy. It's not enough.
Yeah, that, that's the only area that's not, the rest of it is not locked, that I know of.
Right, but how do you, with all that, actually put a business in there? You can't.
You can't.
Right, so. In an industrial zone.
A river alone, you gotta be certain amount. It's an active river, so you gotta be, uh, I'm not sure if it's a hundred or two hundred feet. Away from that. Can't do nothing with it anyway.
Oh, no, no, I understand that. And that was the question that they had.
Why is it, why is it zoned that way then? It really doesn't matter what zone it is. You can't do nothing on it.
In the issue of the second one, without mentioning the parties involved. Going to need, and they're going to pursue this. They are going to need a, a variance. To overcome some obstacles that are created. Because there is a residential piece. Residential piece and we get to the industrial or commercial zone.
So.
That was on William Street.
Williams.
That's on William.
So I have a map, a zoning map, the only. Unless that's there is. This is all business.
And, and industrial is.
Well, there's this little slice here, but you'd have several businesses along this road, along Cedar. But. Is this, is this fine here or is it online? Or no, that's just a river or something? Okay, so. This, that's.
Which one? This is the one that we're talking about.
This, this, this big block here, that's in the industry, that's industrial, what is there?
Industrial is.
Yeah, purple. So that's far too down, that's too far down the main line. This is past, this is low center. That must be this law, this block here they're talking about. I don't know if, and what is in there, but.
And where it's. If a piece of land is designated industrial and it can't be used. Shouldn't we not change the designation to either open space or conservation land?
Should we not?
No, should we? Should we change the designation?
The access to it, you mean? Is that, is that what you?
Well, you can't ax, really access it. If you have a piece of land that has been zoned industrial and you can't use it for industrial purposes. Should we not change the.
Zoning?
Nation?
Oh.
To open space or conservation land or recreation land?
So what are the, just my thoughts? I mean, one of the things we're making, uh, like in the economic development plan. Uh, you know, that we really have made as our top focus. Like I think, I mean, if this, oh, you know, like if this issue really generates a lot of. Uh, like if this issue generates a feedback and the fact that, like, we do have it, um. Um, and I'm looking at the zoning map on William Street now and it is landlocked. Uh, you know, maybe that becomes a priority or a recommendation as part. Like of our economic development planning effort that we do take a, like, a more holistic look. At how we have different areas and towns zoned and whether and. I'm gonna assess whether or not those, uh, those ownings designations actually work here in twenty twenty-two. Oh, you know, because maybe, uh, in the past, uh, there was something anticipated. Uh, like on William Street, just as an example, uh, you know, that, that. That block, that, that block was rated for, but if we'll, so, but if we're really trying to, uh, to, uh, measured. Uh, development here at twelve set. Oh, you know, what you, uh, what to deal with our tax revenue issues and. Uh, taking the burden off of our residential or tax base, maybe we look at. How the whole town is owned. And, you know, like really assess whether that zoning works or whether we need to update that.
That's exactly, Mr. Mullin, thank you very much. That is exactly what the representative of that. Developer expressed to me. And that individual, um, has been involved in town government and city of town. So he, he understands how zoning works and.
I'm looking at a, a piece right here, which is on Center and, uh, and Williams. That you pointed out, I have a feeling that's been zoned that way for moons, many, many moons. I don't think that was changed recently.
But, but see, the thing is, we have a very high tax. And we need to work real hard at bringing it down. And we need industry. And you have to take a look at the very little industrial land that we have in this town to begin with. And how can we make it productive? So a business will come in.
I see that, but the, what happens now. Say that you own the parcel that could possibly give access to that. Land that's zoned industrial. Would you want it changed?
That becomes a money issue, my eyes.
Okay.
And I mean.
What about the people that own those houses? Those are all house lots that are given, that, that are owned by somebody.
So that's, why did they either give permission of houses? Or create an industrial zone, knowing that these problems could happen?
It, it may have been created. A hundred years ago. You know, why, why was it done that way? Your guess is as good as mine.
But I think hopefully we do get enough positive response from all our efforts. You know, that we're doing this year, that we can realistically bring things up. So maybe for like the, you know, town meeting next year to say. We've looked at all the zoning, all the zoning in town. And here are some big recommendations we'd like the planning board to really look at and maybe put on the warrant.
Absolutely, I, I. I am all ears when it comes to stuff like that. I, we tried before, we had a, we hired a firm. And we basically just listened to them and their, their recommendations. And we voted accordingly. There were some changes made. But I. I, I wasn't even aware of things like that, but, you know, what else could you do with it? That's the, the, the big question. Do you? Turn it into residential or do you turn it in? And it's. That's why it's so nice when people come into these meetings and. Give opinions and talk about different things, you know? Uh, it doesn't matter who we are in there. It, we like to listen, we like the feedback and unfortunately, not so many people do show up to, uh.
Hopefully they will at the forum.
So, Dan, out of this conversation, uh, do you think it's good for us? As part of our economic development plan? That we do say, you know, we should review zoning and see if it can be more. You know, business friendly or something like that.
So not to jump ahead, but, um, I had on the agenda to talk about, um, home-based businesses. Because that was an item that I heard a lot about in our ride around town. And because we do have zoning around it. Um, so I, I actually sent out a copy. Well, if they wanna, they'll get it, get it to take off. All right. Thanks, Lenny. So this, as far as I can go from the list of amendments to zoning. This is the original. Now, the table that's on page two may have been updated from time to time, but I think this is the original language dating back from like nineteen seventies, thereabouts. And if you actually just read, like, does the actual zoning? By itself, it looks, you know, it looks pretty good in terms of what you, in theory, could allow people to conduct out of their homes. The issue is the table on page two. And the conversation, there's a couple conversations I had with people. And one is, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, if you know more about this than I do. Or a few, we have a lot of. Technically illegal business in town. The residential, they're running businesses. And they probably should have special permits. They probably shouldn't be there at all, considering the nature of some of them. But they're all over the place. I'd say they're all over the place. I don't really know what the magnitude is. There's a fair number of them. And two points. One is, you know, I'm not a lawyer. But from a, just a legal precedent perspective. If you have a law that you do not enforce. And whether that's because you don't have the manpower to enforce it or because you just kind of, as it decide to turn a blind eye. You basically nullify the laws and anybody can come forward and challenge it and say. I don't care that you say you can't do this. You let it happen all the time. I'm doing it and I have a legal right to do it because you don't enforce the laws you have on the books. You know, there's a legal precedent that allows somebody to do that. So to just let it happen and do nothing is not a, is not a solution to a problem. You know, it actually creates a worse problem. And the other is, one guy I was talking to, he actually runs a, a trucking business in town right now. Um, you know, he's another one. He said, you know, in five years, maybe seven years, I'm gonna be retiring, missing my business. I'd love to be able to, out of my house, out of my garage. Somebody wants their brakes done, you know? Uh, you know, I throw me a couple hundred bucks, I'll do your brakes for you out of my garage. He said, I know I'm in a completely residential neighborhood. I'm not allowed to do that. He said, I'm not gonna give you names, but I could name a dozen people in town that do precisely that. Um, and he said, and here's the difference between those people and me, if I were to attempt it, which is. For whatever reason, those people get along with their neighbors and their neighbors don't raise a sting. I already know my neighbor and she will be at every selectman's meeting. She'll be hounding the business commissioner. She'll be going to. Every planning board meeting to complain, 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 complain about me. And so I don't, I don't get to do what everybody else gets to do for no other reason that my neighbor doesn't like me.
Moral of the story.
Moral of the, you know. Point is, that shouldn't be my problem that my neighbor doesn't like me. He was, you let it happen or you don't let it happen. So which is it? So not that we're gonna have anything tonight that we wanna do, but I do think it's worth as a committee. Reviewing what we let people, what we allow for home-based businesses and what we don't. And what are the provisions around them? And the ones that I saw mostly were almond auto repair. Uh, nail salons, um, beauty pageant, beauty salons and barbers. Probably not so much barbers, but beauty salons were, I'd say, you know, that's probably the majority of them. There are some. I think hobbyist craft people in town that sell stuff out of their house. Now, so it's just like, they make stuff, people come over to their house to buy it. It's not a big business. You don't, probably don't even know what's going on, but. You know, I think technically they're in violation of what we've got right now. Should they be? You know, um. So I just think this is something that we should keep, maybe on a future meeting, start delving into more and thinking about proposing some. Protective bylaw changes and.
Should we, um, could you talk with the attorney, the town attorney, um. To see, you know, what, if, if they have any, you know, thoughts on that, um. Wondering them, you know, I mean, I, I, I also wanna let you know that I live in Bridgewater. And Bridgewater is absolutely doing this exact same thing. They're looking to. Generate tax revenue and, um, they're, uh, proposing that they're, they're looking for all businesses. That are in a, in a residential area and they're looking to see how they can.
There's, there's another issue that, that comes up, comes to my mind and if we. Follow through with whatever it comes. And okay, these people are not supposed to be running their business out of here because it's not zoned accordingly. Now, if we tax them accordingly. But it's not zoned accordingly, how.
You can't do both.
You can't, no, but I, my, my point is, can we do anything about it? Can the town do anything about it? They've, they've been there for, you know, five years or whatever. And now we wake up and we say. Uh, you're gonna stop paying taxes. Okay, I want it zoned for commercial.
Yeah, you can't insist somebody pay taxes on an illegal enterprise. That's like, well, I mean, they got Al Capone for not paying taxes, but that's, you know.
No, I, I, I'm just bringing this up. These are questions that are gonna come up and.
And you need to fix the zone.
See, the, the other thing is, you cannot spot zone. So if Mrs. Jones lives here, she's running her business out of there. And John is over here and he's not running any kind of business. You can't zone this commercial. Because that's spot zoning, period. You're not, you're not gonna be able to do it. So it's, it, it's, that's an issue. Can you tell somebody, okay, you're gonna have to pay X amount of dollars if you're gonna run a business out of here? It's not fair to other people. It's not fair to other people that run the same business legally.
That's right.
So it's, yeah, i- it's an issue, it really is an issue.
Well, that's why I was wondering if we asked the council to weigh in with just, you know, those, you know, thoughts.
Uh, Mike, are you still on? I think you're on mute right now. They've lost nine fifteen minutes. We actually have, um, we have many town councils, different boards of council, I mean, I think.
I think we could ask Carrie to.
Carrie?
Put, put that in.
Okay.
Uh, as a question.
Okay, so the planning board's counsel.
Okay, uh, and and if she says, no, I don't think that should be us, I think that should be. The selectman that could ask that question.
Yeah.
Or the tax assessor's office. I mean, the. Does this pertain to zoning, does this pertain to taxes?
Yeah, right.
Is what, where did it go, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's not a, it's not gonna be an easy one.
No, and I think we're gonna unfortunately upset people with this mainly because there are those who say. They're on the side of, I'm in my house, I want all this gone, shut these people down. And there was those who say, I've been doing this fifteen years, what do you mean, this is my side business, I I have to do this. I'm gonna leave town if you make me stop doing this, you know? And so, and then there's like, how do you define the level? Uh, I think this actually, front page is a good job with like. Traffic and noise and air pollution and utility service and.
Safety.
Our customers showing up, is this a fire hazard, you know, do you use cam? This does a good job of playing it out, it's more at the table of use from the second. Gets more restrictive and, yeah, so. Okay.
Mike, Mike is back.
Oh.
I'm sorry about that, when were you looking for me?
That's okay, uh, we were, did you hear the discussion about home-based businesses?
To be honest with you, not too much, I'm sorry, I had a phone call with my dad.
Um, no problem, um, so we were just talking, as John and I were riding around town promoting this kind of event. We saw a lot of home-based business in really residential areas. The town does have some bylaws that allow that. But clearly not illegal. I think in most, in many cases. Uh, even with special permits, if they have them, it's just. You know, there are things like auto body, not auto body, but auto repair and hair salons and manicurists and. People selling stuff out of the house and. You know, as a committee, we'd like to look at the bylaws and. Yet they're a little bit too restrictive right now. And the point I also made was that, um, my understanding, and again, I'm not an attorney, is that. If you have regulations that you do not enforce. Whether you don't enforce them because you don't have the manpower to do it, or because you just kind of turn a blind eye because you feel it's not a big deal, doesn't really matter why. But if you don't enforce them, then the first person who comes along and says, they're gonna do it. And you tell them, no, they're like, that I have a legal right to do this because you don't enforce the law, you've got, you basically have been negged on it. I don't know. Yeah. So, um, John suggested is, um, could the town council? Help us understand if that's a true statement or not, and I guess that we have many councils, I didn't know which one's appropriate one to go to and. Joe just suggested maybe we start with Carrie and the planning board's, uh, council.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, because, uh, this is a zoning issue, um, and, um. And, you know, zoning issues relative to the, uh, the bylaws they do from under planning board. Like I would reach, um, I would start with reaching out to Carrie. Um, and I can work, I mean, I can, uh, with Joe, reach out to Carrie as well. You know, I, oh, yeah, I do get the question, uh, you know, I just. Because of the sensitivity of it, I, yeah, no, I can follow up with Carrie for sure, so. Um, so what you were hearing then were, oh, you know, like you're getting a sense that. Oh, you know, but not a lot of home-based businesses are actually. Uh, like they're actually getting a special permit.
Uh, or the, the, under the bylaw, they said they're not allowed period, even with the special permit, I mean, beauty salons, manicurists, hairstylists. Those are not allowed even with the special permit in a residential neighborhood. And I think we have a fair number of them in town. And I have no idea what the magnitude is, I'm just anecdotal, just riding around town, you know? Trying to look at businesses and invite people and people have signs in their room and their front yard and that kind of stuff. But, um. And one person in particular who I, I mentioned, did talk to, who owns a trucking company in town, said, you know. He plans to retire in five to seven years, he'd like, he'd love to be able to, if he does that, he sells his business. Still be able to operate at a very, very low level out of his garage. Helping people, old customers that maybe need a break job or something and. And I know it's illegal because I'm in a purely residential neighborhood. But I also know that there's a half a dozen, two dozen guys in town that do that all the time. And they, nobody stops them. He said, I just don't wanna like plan on something that somebody's gonna knock on my door one day, something, no, you're not supposed to do that. He said, and in his case, this is. The story he gave was that the only difference between them and him is that. They have neighbors apparently who don't object or don't cause complaint. Whereas he knows his, one of his neighbors well enough to know that. He would complain endlessly, everybody would listen, never let him up, get up and running doing this. And he just thinks that there, it's, you know, that other people doing it, you probably can't do it. But I think just as a general issue, I think maybe. We tend, we are a bit restrictive in terms of businesses, we allow them out of homes. And I have no specific, you know, suggestions about changing it. Other than I think it's something that this committee could maybe look at and bring forward to the planning board for maybe any town meeting. No, maybe some revisions to, uh, home occupation for businesses.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, I mean. Yeah, like, I mean, I mean, it's great that these residents, he spoke to, want to actually do due diligence, which is. I like, which is helpful and responsible, so we could definitely look at that.
Okay. So, um. Let's see. The, the other suggestion that came up, um, and I did talk to the town clerk about this and. I mean, I think we actually brought this up ourselves early, early on, like last February, which is. A town business registry because people do want to shop and buy locally. You know, and you see it on Facebook, does anybody recommend a Dyton business that does X that, you know? And Dyton does have a business registry, generally, according to town clerk, it's because. You know, when somebody's doing business and they go for a loan or insurance. The first question they get is, are you registered either at the state or town level? So that brings them into the town clerk's office, they get registered. He said some towns publish that. He chooses not to. And the reason not is because a lot of people, for contact information, they list. Their cell phone or something like that, he's like, I have no idea what they gave me for contact information, I'm not comfortable sticking it out on the web. Um, so kind of the suggestion was. Maybe this committee could take on establishing something like this that could be published on the web. If people opt in. You know, and if they opt in, then they can make sure that they're using the right communication method, it's. A phone that they don't mind getting calls on, or it's their web address, it's their email or whatever they want. And, um, town clerk was perfectly fine with that, he said, I have no problem with that, if people want, I'll say, please publish me. Um, and you know, as he said, some towns do this anyway, so. I thought, I also thought that was a good idea.
So would the town clerk alter the form, um, did he offer to alter?
He did, this is just a general discussion. But he said, yeah, he'd be willing to work with us or whoever, you know, we decided as a town. So. I'm not sure how this logistically would work, whether. The town publishes its public, its business registry list, people opt in. Or this is something completely outside of that, that this committee does and just puts people up if they want to be up and. Um, I think our, um, when we talked about this internally and it just came up last January, or this, or February. We were like, yeah, how are we gonna screen out the, my kid has a snow blower and he'll do your sidewalks, you know? That's not registering it, that's not publicizing a town business, I mean, yes, I get it, that they're out there and they're doing a job, but. You know, and then you piss people off because you're screening out people and, but if it, they're registered with the town. That's the screening.
Yeah.
So then it's a little bit more official.
And also, the town does get the list of Dyton businesses. That are like LLCs and S Corps and C Corps that register with the Secretary of State, right? So doesn't the Secretary of State send the town clerk? The list of Dyton businesses that are registered at the state level?
My understanding is no, they do not actually.
No.
No. That's a different, as long as they're registered, sorry, Mike, you know, Mark.
So, yeah, my thought is maybe, uh, like, we're redoing, um, as we know, our town website right now. And we have the opportunity to have different types of forms on our new website. Uh, where, uh, you know, like a local business may be able to so-called register, sign up to be part of the directory. Uh, so my thought is maybe we invite, once that was out, uh, probably by the end of next week. Uh, we invite the town clerk maybe to one of our upcoming meetings to see how we might, sort of see what information he has. Uh, what information he might get from the state, if any, um, and then how we might be able to move forward and with a. Uh, like a more all-encompassing database.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Where does Mark live, is he living there? He does not, he does, okay, alright.
Yeah, he's a Dyton resident, yes, he's an elected official.
Right, okay.
So, just to go on record, you were the first one to bring this up.
So maybe that's why I thought it was a good idea when I heard it, repeated back.
Actually, it's a dilemma that I think that we should address, I mean, it is a little bit of a dilemma, right?
When, um. I bought this property on the corner here many moons ago. Woody approached me, he wanted to, uh, put a barber shop there. The town taxed me separately. Because it was a business there. So I've been paying taxes on that ever since, so. And that, actually now, I, I could go back and get some money back from them, but.
So that's barber pole that's out there, nobody's.
Nobody is in there, that's just a decoration.
I'm just gonna get a haircut, well.
All you have to do is call me out. Free of charge.
Any other comments that people have gotten from the surveys or visits or the event or?
I just wanted to just, uh, put on the record, because I'm not sure we've talked about this, um, is that I am absolutely pursuing Westport Rivers Winery.
I don't think anybody else knows about it, except maybe Raphael, because you've mentioned it to him, but.
Okay, yes.
So if you wanna let everyone know.
So, um, I grew up on Horton Street. And many, many years ago, on Horton Street, uh, there was a family by the name of the Russells. And the Russells grew grapes.
Yeah.
Across the street.
Yeah.
And, um, he, you know, had a, had a regular job and he did his wine thing on the side. Well, he left Dyton and bought a farm in Westport, which is now Westport Rivers Winery. Um, so I am trying to contact him as a fellow Horton Street resident from many years ago.
I think they still own some land in Horton, John, or.
Interesting.
I had the chance to meet them some time ago. I don't know if they sold that sense or, uh, whatever, but I, I.
So they have a very successful business in Westport. Um, I don't know if you're aware, it is.
I, I've been not into their business, but I've seen the vineyard that they have.
Yeah, yeah, so they have bands, they have food trucks. They have big things at their winery, you know, very public events. And so they always have people come and go and wine tastings. And it's an agricultural business, right, I thought it would be a nice fit for Dyton. Um, so I'm trying to pursue him to say, would you like to come back to Dyton? Or, you know, how, you know, can we do anything here? So I just wanted to let people know that I'm, you know, seeing what we, I can do.
I like that, I, I actually wanna say to the both of you. You, you, what you guys are doing is just unbelievable, I, I. I wouldn't have thought about, you know, this thing about driving around and getting my butt chewed out by this guy.
Was amazing.
I, I, I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy that you guys. You know, are, are doing that, you know, just, I don't think I could do it. I, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, most people are nice.
Yeah.
Most people were nice.
Most people. You can't expect everybody to be.
I do expect everybody to be nice. I've been dealing with a public forty-somethings.
So, do you still have to leave at seven thirty or?
Oh, no, I don't have to leave, I mean, I'm, my wife is DVRing.
Oh, okay, alright.
Mine is not, wanted to see that.
So the next item is just the progress we put on Zenica, we have this as a standard item. And this time there's actually some real front to report, you know, at least on the initial stages, but. Mike, I know they were at the September fourteenth selectance meeting. Um, I didn't realize they, on like, above and beyond filing the INRA with Congress with the Conservation Commission. It sounds like they're actually at least, you know, working towards doing much more than that. So the selectance meeting was really, uh, a nice news, but, is that like a two-minute summary you can give everybody and?
Yeah, so there, um, they began, um, like actually the cleanup process, I believe, in around, um, twenty fifteen. Um, they, um, got a consent order from the EPA, um, and then started working. Um, uh, to develop our plans, uh, for the cleanup. And, um, in after September fourth, September fourteenth meeting. Um, a representative from Zenica, they, uh, they came forward because as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, they recently filed an INRA application. Um, to delineate the, the wetland and environmental resources, uh, in the area. Um, of the parcels, which starts up on Main Street. Uh, but then it moves down to the south, all the way down to, um, through muddy, uh, Brooklyn into the Tottenham River on Pleasant Street. So, um, they're going through that process with the Conservation Commission now. Um, and they're really, uh, uh, they're really planning, uh, you know, like in. Um, in continuing in earnest, uh, with their cleanup efforts, uh, like, uh, but, you know, they expect it will take. Uh, it will take multiple years. Oh, you know, they don't have, um, and they haven't, um, provided us any details with what their long-range plans might be for the site. Uh, but I mean, the fact that, oh, you know, they're really, and we, uh, you know. And as you mentioned, it was really palpable to hear their commitment to the cleanup. Um, at the meeting on the fourteenth, so, uh, so, yeah, we're happy that, uh, the cleanup will be continuing and moving forward. And that, I like a lot of the, oh, you know, the questions, uncertainties that, oh, etc., that. Uh, we all have, uh, with the property in terms of the cleanup efforts, uh, are really underway at this point, so it's promising.
And I'm not sure whether it was one of the selectmen or you or someone from the audience asked them about, you know, future use. And of course, they had to say, you know, we don't really know yet because we're starting this, but. Surprisingly, he mentioned, I think he said passive solar, he said it could be passive solar, who knows? Me, because that has the least footprint in terms of ground disturbance. Which is something that we've been picking around here a little bit, so that was, uh, that was good to hear too.
Yeah, agreed.
Uh, the next item is to discuss any new business interest in town, I'm not actually aware of any, but any new openings. I believe E and L training is kicking off sometime now in early October, mid-October. He did say they would let the selectance office know if they had, because they're working through the, the chamber for a, um, opening, grand opening. But they'll make sure that they select the selectance office now, so town officials can attend as well.
Great.
Um, nothing, I don't have anything for old business. Correspondence, none. Correspondence, none. I do have the DDIC at Dyton dash MA.gov email up and running, uh, because I did actually get a little bit of correspondence from people, because I started listing that to say, if you want to come to the Aggie event, and you don't want to sign up online, just send me an email, you know, um, and so I did get a little bit of correspondence from that, um. If no one here for public input, uh, the next item would be approval of the, uh, August twenty-second meeting minutes. Anybody need a copy of that? Did send these out online, if you had a chance to read them. Everybody's looked at that, entertain a motion to, to those.
So I'd be happy to make a joke in the meantime, Mr. Chairman. I'm just kidding, I don't have any jokes.
Dan, will you guys, uh, read the minutes, I'm actually going to take off. Um, but I will be in touch over the next couple of weeks to talk about the kind of setup of the, of the, uh, public workshop.
Okay, that sounds good, alright, great, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Everybody okay? Want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August twenty-second.
Uh, second? Second show, all those in favor, say aye.
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 You have to move the motion.
Have to move the motion?
Yeah.
I came, I, I, I asked for a motion, he made it, he made a second.
Whatever.
Okay. Everything we've done for the past year is to be disregarded because we have not been following procedure apparently.
Robert's rules.
I know, okay.
Patrick Pagan snow.
So, I heard four ayes, so meeting passed, next meeting date, if we get to the fourth Monday, it'll be October twenty-fourth. And that will give us, that'll be like two weeks before our first, um, public forum, so hopefully we can go over all the details there.
Okay, good.
That worked for everybody? Um, entertain a motion to adjourn?
The second.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both meetings adjourned, I have, um, seven thirty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, everybody, thank you.